6:30 PM. Evy Anderson is our interim clerk. Thank you, Evy. And she is going to be calling rock call. Remember that we want to hear minority views as well as majority views. We want you to feel heard and connected to your panel and its council. We do ask for respectful conversation. No slanderous profanity or personal attacks can be made whatsoever. You can be asked to leave the meeting. All right, so Evy, can you go ahead and...
Councilman Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilman Brian Vinson.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sinkovich.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, quorum is confirmed. Councilmember White is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Heavenly Father, we pray today that as we make these decisions for the town and for our neighbors, that you'd grant us wisdom and a heart to hear you and what you have going on for our town. It should give us great patience in dealing with one another and dealing with the difficult matters that we've been presented with. Lord, and I pray that we keep it at the foremost fronts of our mind and at our heart to love our neighbors as ourselves and just accomplish your will for us today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Simeon. Okay, under items of community interest, we now have a lending library, thanks to the McFarland family. It's a take a book, return a book. That's available at the temporary town hall right now. Hopefully that'll go to the new town hall. We had a volunteer who cleaned up the books and organized them, and that, we're grateful to her. That was Marissa Frankum. Thank you, Marissa. So also, our town secretary that was approved, Teresa Scholander, is out longer than expected. She had to have a second surgery. She's expected back in August. Her doctor will not allow her to even type. So that's one of the reasons we're here, for a special agenda. We have on G, a special agenda interview, discuss and consider applicant Liz Patterson for the position of Deputy Town Secretary. A little background information, so I think it was Councilmember Vinson that had mentioned that, and maybe it was your wife, I can't recall, that mentioned that Liz was interested in a secretary position. And I said, "Well, that was already filled, but we have a deputy secretary position." And she was interested, and I communicated with Teresa, and I said, "Teresa, here's the situation." And she was very relieved because she feels very badly that she has to be out so long. So she was actually excited about the opportunity to have a deputy secretary come along and kind of fill in. And she was very excited about that. So we're gonna go ahead and ask Liz to come on up. Yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am. So she has a resume here. There's also resume in her packet. So basically, it says she has cross-country mortgage. Presently, she's working on referral and accounts with high-level service to self-generated leads and providing tools and information to assist a smooth and successful closing process. She has salvaged troubled accounts by enhancing the customer experience using her natural sense for customer service. She forecasts possible complications on a case-by-case basis, taking appropriate steps to ensure that referral partners, consumers, and support staff avoid unnecessary hurdles. She feels like her skills or organization relating to clients, identifying client needs, helping more difficult cases to achieve their goals, paying attention to details easily missed, motivating self and others, setting goals and creating plans to achieve, public speaking comfortably, performing and producing video, relevant video marketing. She has two letters of recommendation. One is from Monica Snead, Attorney at Law. And she says she's trusted Elizabeth with her clients. She's reliable and dedicated to successfully completing all tasks and appointments in front of her. She's always prepared to learn new and exercise her existing skills. She's always eager to work with her. She finds a way to organize and manage all the tasks in front of her. She strives to be a woman of her word and does well to meet the needs and expectations of others. From Diane Briomes, I guess that's how you pronounce that. She's owned Ms. Patterson for over 10 years. Elizabeth's a positive person. She has set high goals for her and achieves them. No job or task is too small or too big for her. She's very friendly. She smiles and wants to help everyone. Elizabeth enjoys projects, organizing, and scheduling. She loves things to be in order. She has a can-do attitude. And then she has where you can call and ask for questions if you'd like. So I guess if the council has any questions for Liz, now's the time.
I guess I just have to ask, any conflicts or anything that you ought to raise before we vote? I mean, because we do need to know if there's any conflicts or anything like that.
Oh, I don't know. I recently moved back. I actually grew up in poetry. That's one reason why I wanted to get involved with the council in any way possible, because I just have a passion for this place. I moved back, bought my house out here, and I'm raising my own child out here. I have flexible hours with my job. I'm self-employed, so I'm sponsored by a mortgage company, but I have a team that helps me. I'm actually opening an office locally as well. So hours are flexible. That's a blessing, and I'm excited to get involved. I don't see any reason for conflict.
No violations or anything like that?
I mean, I know I look like a hardened criminal, but no. I try to stay on this side of the law, yeah.
How'd you find out about this position?
My mother, she's, she actually is, she gets the newsletters, the poet, I guess, is it the Poetry Newsletter? Yeah, so she had mentioned something about it, and I was wanting to get more involved, but wasn't sure where to start. So I went online. I found the newsletter. I just looked up the City of Poetry, and I emailed and inquired if the position was still available.
When did, when did we, when did we okay a deputy secretary position?
When we made, created the position, we had both a secretary and a deputy secretary position in the ordinance that we created. And that was based on Union Valley. They have a secretary and a deputy secretary position.
So for the completeness of the record, yeah, I think it was my wife that talked to you about her wanting. But yeah, we do know Liz through her mother, so yeah. What do you think would be your toughest challenge working in this position?
I honestly just think it's gonna be learning all the aspects of it, figuring out the new, you know, pieces of this. I've never done this before. The job I have is very clerical, so paperwork and typing and things like that will be of no challenge to me. My laptop is basically attached to me at the hip, so I don't see any concerns with that. I really just think it's gonna be figuring out what the position is and then filling those needs and figuring out how to do those the most efficiently.
Well, you know what? I'm gonna ask you a pretty difficult question here, and it's gonna take a little bit of explaining. It's one I like to ask in general interviews anyways, especially with a town like this where we're just getting started. There's a lot of trust in place and not a lot of security measures, if you will. So trust is very, very important. And sometimes I like to ask ethical questions to the person, right? And so can you tell me about a time in your previous employment where you were ethically challenged? Like, for example, I've had people tell me about times where they trained up an employee and then caught that employee, who was their friend, taking money from a cash register, and they had to address that situation? Or, you know, a boss asked them to do something they're not comfortable with? Can you cite any examples like that? Tell us how you handled the situation?
Yeah, so the industry that I'm in, the housing industry, I deal with people's personal, confidential, private information all of the time. I, you know, can't disclose too much information, but those pose ethical issues all of the time. Whether it be, for instance, the attorney that wrote the letter, she allows me to help a lot of her clients that are going through divorce. And whenever I'm dealing with a client that's going through divorce, oftentimes I have to reach out to the other spouse who they are no longer, they're soon to be no longer married to. But I have to be very careful about what information is disclosed and what information isn't disclosed. You also have to be very careful in my line of work, because I have a passion for helping others, so I wanna make sure that I'm serving people. But sometimes that, that passion, you have to make sure you're doing the right things and you're abiding the rules that are set in front of us. So, you know, there's a lot of gray areas in life, but especially when it comes to businesses, especially when you're dealing with money. So I deal with that probably on a daily basis. Did that answer your question?
That did. And do you, I mean, if you could cite a specific example of you applying that, or maybe there being some of that gray area, and you had to make a tough decision, and why you chose the option you did? If you have a specific example in mind, I would love to hear that specifically. But that's great general information, too.
I can give you a more specific example. We had a client who was a, some of their information just didn't necessarily line up. This is somebody who, you get emotionally involved with people that you work with when you're trying to help them achieve something like a home where their family's gonna live, where they're gonna raise their kids, especially when they have little babies. You know, and they pull on your heartstrings. They do mine, at least, so they get to me. And anyway, we had a client who, some of the things did not necessarily line up. Their employer looked like they were out of an apartment complex that these people also lived out of, that their cousin also lived out of. Some of the bank statements didn't match. Some of the bank statements looked like they may have been fiddled with, and some of the paycheck subs, you know, were a little questionable. But you have to pay really close attention. You don't always know. And, you know, I had to make a hard decision of not working with that family, because there are rules that I have to abide by, you know, to say, not only on the good side of the law, but to make sure that our housing market stays in a good place and that our practices, you know, in my job, that I'm doing the right thing. So I felt uncomfortable. I discussed them and addressed them. I didn't feel like there was honesty, so even though it was a loss of money for me, and it was a loss of a relationship for me, and I probably got drug through the mud over canceling that transaction, it was something I had to do.
Great, that's a great example. Thank you. You're a pretty tough lady.
Well, and I will disclose, I first met Liz as a student at PCCS, and I was a teacher there for many years, an adjunct teacher and administrative there. And Liz had a wonderful reputation as being a very good student, a very honorable student, go-getter, happy all the time. She was always smiling, and just people loved her, and the teachers loved her, and so that moves forward with her. Thank you for that.
Well, I just got one last thing, then, because you've answered a lot of the questions. One of the things that was specifically brought up that the deputy secretary would be doing that takes up a considerable amount of time is the typing of the minutes. And I think you cited six to eight hours or something like that?
Well, it depends on how long the meeting is. But if someone, well, I just know from last time, if you have to go listen to the video, that's four hours on average, right? So then you have to make a synopsis of that, type that in, and then you edit and re-edit and re-edit to fit the format. And so it does, it's like, kind of like a small term paper, right? Because it's 12 pages, 12 to 15 pages long. And of course, it does depend on the length of the meeting.
Since it's so intrinsic to the job, then, do you happen to know your words per minute that you type?
I actually don't. I do get comments quite frequently that people don't believe I'm actually typing words, though. I can, I could do a test and figure it out, but I'm, I've been doing my job for seven years, and it requires a lot of typing all day, very quickly, to cover a lot of span. So I feel confident, you know, in her explaining that. My thought process on that, too, was, you know, maybe there's a more efficient way we can do that. And I'd be interested to find, you know, research that and find ways to do that that maybe we can incorporate, not just for me, but for other versions of me.
Well, if you were attending the meeting and sitting in the spot over there, you could be typing as we were, and that's kind of what Secretary Caroline was able to do, and it did make it more efficient.
Okay, that would definitely be something.
And then there's, of course, the packets of, that take, can take hours to assemble, depending on the length of the meeting and the interest in the meeting.
Okay. Like the packets that were provided here?
Yes. Any other questions for the council? Okay, so we have a citizen, Chad West. Citizen Kenzie Salasberg.
Okay, she seems wonderful. I'd like y'all to take into effect, like y'all said, there's a lot of training and things that's gonna go into that. So my suggestion would be make her, if she's willing, be the primary secretary, and then maybe the other one a deputy, if y'all have to have a deputy secretary.
Well, to speak to that, we've already made Teresa Scholander the secretary, and depending on her health issues, that may have to be the case. But she has the 20-plus years of financial experience. She's very adept at financials, so she has quite a bit of more experience. So I don't know that, you know, and we've already made her the secretary, but depending on her health issues, that may have to happen. I don't know the future, so. Kevin? Okay, so we're gonna close briefly. Now, remember, we cannot take a vote behind closed doors, but in case there's anything that the council wants to talk about, as a courtesy, we're allowed to do that, to go to closed session. The council may go into closed session anytime when permitted by chapters 418 or 551 Texas Government Code or Section 321, 3022 of the Texas Tax Code. Before going into closed session, a quorum of the council must be assembled in the meeting room. The meeting must be convened in an open meeting pursuant to proper notice, and the presiding officer must announce that a closed session will be held and must identify the sections of the chapter 551 or 450. Now we have Section 321.3022 of the Texas Tax Code authorizing the closed session deputy secretary position. And remember that this is out of consideration, so if you were in a job interview, you wouldn't want them speaking in public on video about you, so we're trying to be considerate in that manner. Moving to our regular meeting, reconvening to the regular meeting. So we had a healthy dialogue. So do we have a motion?
I move we extend an offer to Liz, Elizabeth Patterson, for the Office of Deputy Secretary of Town of Poetry.
Is there a second?
I second it.
So the motion's been made and seconded by Anderson that we move to accept Liz Patterson as our deputy secretary position. All those in favor? And we've got three abstaining, okay?
I'm a no. No.
Two noes, okay. Three in favor and two noes, and it passes. Congratulations. Okay, so moving on now. On this, there was a typo. That's a need for a secretary. Discuss number, it's actually number three. Discuss and consider the estimate provided by Kaufman County for project sheet KO2 for roads, CR 323, CR 247, and CR 249 in the amount of $3,557 or other possible solutions. Now, this came straight from our citizens who file road reports. So, and that's the advantage of having that online, the road, they file the road reports, and then I just, you know, I got, I get calls and I get emails. I get people coming by telling me about different roads. And I did go and ride, so kind of spared you guys of having to divide and conquer like we did on the first one. But they have gotten really bad over the winter, and I know they can't do a lot of it in the winter. So that is Terry Barber, well, it's actually Aaron Conway is the supervisor, and he's the one that comes up with that, so. Any questions on that? I did get just two phone calls today, actually complaining about 249 and 2458. Citizens Brenda Guernsey and Kenneth Giard complaining about those, that specific set of roads, how it's high traffic, it's got potholes, it's dangerous, and they went on and on. And so it has been a problem. So we've got citizens to speak on number three. Shelley Smith. Patrick Smith. Chad West.
I guess, what's the plan to do something more than potholes? I mean, the county road 249 in 2018, Kaufman County spent a significant amount of money to go through and put down new base, tar and chip that road, and they tarred and chipped it every year thereafter until we became a town. And now we're just going to go out there and patch it, as opposed to have we estimated or done anything to figure out what it's gonna cost to actually tar and chip it, to do it right? Or do we just let it continue to degrade till we end up having to foot the bill to redo the entire road? And I mean, obviously, it needs something, but, I mean, where's the long-term plan?
I agree. So the citizens of the Town of Poetry voted in a 2% sales and use tax to go exclusively to the roads and repair. So once that money kicks in, we think in July, it's totally up to the comptroller. We don't have any say in that. That's up to the comptroller of Texas. Then, once that kicks in, then we should have more funds to be able to do that kind of thing.
Has anybody actually started to put pen to paper and calculate how much it's going to cost?
I have.
Is that something that could be shared with the town?
Not under this agenda item, but that is something that, yes, I have. Thank you, Chad. Chad, can you state your address, please? Okay, thank you, sir. Kenzie? Did she leave?
She stepped outside.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
How are we prioritizing our roads right now?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
How are we prioritizing our roads right now? By most complaints? Or by that documentation that all five council members gave, by the grades? You know, we graded all the roads.
Well, that was for the tree limb.
And the road laser.
So basically, on this was basically the number of complaints on the roads report. And then, in the course, I get emails, I get people coming by, I get phone calls, and then I just drove the roads, kind of saving you guys, because I know time is the essence. People are really complaining right now. We need to get on it. And so that was the other reason I wanted to do this tonight, so, because if we didn't do it tonight, it would be postponed like three weeks based on when the, because the, you know, the judges have to meet with their commissioners to approve this form. So the sooner we get this done, the sooner they can do their job and approve it and then get it going.
Our franchise, and that's fine, yeah, the most complaints are usually, Squiggy will's gonna get the grease. Our franchise fees go to roads, too, right? Or is that general budget?
Just general budget. And we do have, I brought our budget, and in the general budget, so it does say pothole repair only. We can spend up to $4,792 a month in this budget, and that's under E2, maintenance, repair.
And that, so how far are we into our fiscal year? October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May?
So, you know, in winter, we can't really do a lot with road repair.
Is that a 12-month, is that a total divided by 12? About $4,792?
Yes, yes. So now...
So we could throw some more money in it if we could get them to...
We could if, now granted, we're a little behind on some of the revenue, as well as, you know, we thought that maybe the 2% sales and use would already be kicked in, but it hasn't, and so we're behind on that. But we haven't spent as much on, say, a secretary, because we haven't had the position filled for a while. So we, now is the time, I guess, to consider start putting more money into that.
Yeah, I'd like to ramp it up, because, I mean, if we've got the money budgeted and we're behind on the starting process of it, I would like to ramp it up and get, to Chad's point, the better that we can stay on top of these, I think the longer the Band-Aid's gonna last, if we clean it real good first.
Well, certainly. I totally agree with you, Terry. Yes.
So Tara, you know Kaufman County would pay for both labor and materials. Where Hunt County, we only pay for materials, they provide the labor. Did, 3,557, did Aaron give a breakdown of the labor costs?
On the sheet that I provided, it's in your packet, it does show, he just basically, he didn't say specifically, he said it would be an eight-man total, using a patch truck and eight hours and 15 tons of material, so two crews, eight men total, using a patch truck and trailer in eight hours.
So if we use the same numbers from Hunt County, because Aaron doesn't separate it the way you're asking, and that's fine. If Kaufman County's paying the same amount, $110 per ton, and Kaufman County's using 15 tons, it's $1,650 for material. And the remainder of that, how much was this total price? 3,557? So $1,900 in labor. If they're buying the material at the same price, which I think it's gonna be real similar.
Well, and our volunteer road crew, I think they're a little bit tired. They have worked really, really hard over the last numerous months, and they've done a great job. I think one thing that I've heard is they wanna see, okay, let's see what Kaufman County does as far as what their roller and how much better, hopefully, I don't know, that they might do a more professional job. Nothing against the volunteers team, but they have, they have more of the equipment, right, to do, to do, hopefully, that, but I don't know. We'll see. And we haven't, we haven't, this is our first road pothole repair project for them, right, on an assignment.
When's the commissioner's court meet?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
When does the commissioner's court meet?
So it varies. Now Kaufman County meets every Tuesday, I believe, and Hunt County is every other Tuesday.
I think Kaufman's every other week, too.
Is it Kaufman every other week?
We ran into that problem before with Kaufman. We missed one and had to wait two weeks.
We had to wait two, okay. So I thought Terry Barber had told me that they moved it every, but I could be mistaken, so. I know Hunt County's every other week.
Well, I guess the only thing we want to be sure is, and this is a small number, really, but Kaufman originally bid out or told us we'd be charged what we thought were exorbitant rates.
And they've come down quite a bit.
And we came back to them and said they had to charge only their cost for labor and materials, but particularly their cost for labor, and we defined it in the contract with them. And I guess that's... their cost for labor, and we defined it in the contract with them. And I guess, that's one of the things I would be interested, not to hold up this one, but in the future, I think we ought to ask them, what is the labor cost?
Well, we, I think we have that in our contract.
Do we?
We have that written out.
We have it in our contract, but the specific number, I don't know that we have that. Anyway, this isn't, I don't wanna hold this up, it's just, I think, over, in the future, we need to ask them, what is the cost per hour for the labor, just to be sure they're charging their cost, which is their out-of-pocket cost, not an embedded cost.
And we do have $300 left in escrow account from the tree limb cleanup. So, they only spent like $200 doing that. Kenzie, did you wanna speak to this? Okay. Okay, Kevin, did you wanna speak?
Kevin Sinkovich, 11090, CR 2400 Poetry. I just wanted to let you guys know that the volunteer group basically pulled funds together and patched 6,000, 7,000 holes in the last year, since it's been a little bit over a year. And, it was all done on donations. And the group actually still wants, you know, Terry made a good, Terry helped out on the last, the last one, and he made a good point, that we don't wanna wear out the group. But, there are some members of the group that want us to continue, because it brings camaraderie, and it's just fellowship, and we have a good time just doing it. So, you know, up until this point in time, the 6,000, 7,000 holes was done just on volunteer, throwing money into a can, right? So, at some point in time, and we really wanted Kaufman and Hunt to handle it this time, because we're, we did a pretty good job, but there's edges, as Chad, there's edges, and there's some serious things that professionals need to handle. But, at some point in time, we don't wanna go away. We wanna actually come before you and say, hey, guys, our trailer holds three or four tons, it's $120 a ton for the cold mix, would you guys be willing to, you know, buy three or four tons for us, so we could continue going, and we don't have to go beg on hand and knee to the citizens of Poetry asking for, you know, funds, so.
I can see where that would be unvendacious, especially for Kaufman County, since you guys, the volunteer team, would be free labor and community service, and that would be a win for Poetry.
Yeah. But Poetry Road's a serious road because of the traffic, and it's just dangerous even working on it. So, I'm really happy that Kaufman and Hunt both will work on that road, because it's, it's pretty dangerous.
Well, they'll even tell, that Aaron Conway, the supervisor, he says, yeah, it's pretty dangerous for even us. And we've got, you know, the truck, and the, all the orange cones, and the orange vests, and everything, and it's dangerous for them. People fly through there.
And plus, having rollers, and, you know, decent equipment, you know, that'll make a big difference, I think, too.
Well, thank you for all that you've done, volunteer road team. There's been so many, so many who've contributed to that.
Hey, he brings up a good point. So, 249's in Kaufman County. Hunt County doesn't continue on 2458.
So, 2458 is on number four.
I guess I'm seeing a different one than you. I've got 2446, 2450, 2326, and 2434.
I have 2450.
2434 is twice, for some reason. Yeah. But if 2458's in the bid, that helps us secure our section of legal.
Okay.
Well, I'll live on 2434, so twice is good. You'll get it double. Oh, so we're taking care of the councilman's road?
Yeah.
I see.
It's a thoroughfare. Everybody goes through it.
But 2458 is on your list for Hunt County?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, Chad McFarland?
No.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion that we accept item three on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the project sheet KO2 for roads CR 323, CR 247, and 249 in the amount of $3,557. And, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that's seconded by Councilmember Jaffe. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number four, discuss and consider the estimate provided by Hunt County for project sheet HO2 for roads CR 2446, CR 2458, CR 2450, CR 2326, and CR 2434, for the amount of $1,320. And the back information for that one is, on April 26, I texted Randy Straits for a project sheet estimate on the, on those roads for, and they don't have a hot mix machine, but he said, for hot, I just said for hot or cold mix, for the potholes. Randy reiterated that they don't have a hot mix truck. He responded on Thursday, May 5, saying the materials cost is $110 per ton, and six tons per truck. He figured it would take at least two trucks to fill all the potholes, and so he was looking at $1,320 for the total.
Well, it's nice to see us actually getting something done that's real for the town, because all these administrative costs. I'm glad to see us actually repairing something. So, I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, wait, do we have any?
We do, we do have. Okay, Shelley Smith?
Shelley Smith, 18730, FM 1565. Okay, first question, how much is each county kicking in? I know that it says how much we're paying out of city-town funds. How much is each county kicking in?
Well, on item number four, for Hunt County, they're providing all the labor and all the equipment.
And what is that worth?
I don't know. I don't know.
How much did you say the labor was worth, Terry, for the other one? Because I imagine it's pretty close.
I mean, I could probably find out, but I don't-
It was $1,907 if they're buying material at the same price.
It's around, okay, so for Hunt County, they just charge us material, and then our county taxes pay for all the labor and all the equipment.
That's what I wanna know, is how much of my county taxes-
You know, I'm sure they have people who earn $18 an hour, and some earn $22 or $25 an hour, so. But, actually, on the tail end of that, once we find out exactly how many hours they put into it, we could get a more solid figure on that.
I think the citizens would like to know that the county taxes that they're paying to the county actually get used, and how much of it it is.
I agree.
And also, I'd like to ask, okay, are we changing the format for audience participation?
No.
Because on number three, you called me up before you discussed and considered, and I didn't know. Am I supposed to get used to that?
You passed.
Or do I get to hear your discussion first, and then I get to make comments?
So, it's our discussion first, and then the citizens' comments, and then we vote.
Okay, but on number three, you didn't discuss it. You just read it, and then you called me. I'm just curious. I wanna know.
There wasn't, okay, so, the format is supposed to be that we, and we, of course, went through this process, but it is supposed to be that we discuss it, then the citizens will comment, and then we take a vote. So, I apologize if that is not, I don't recall. Okay. Okay. Okay, so, any other comments? We do have Patrick Smith?
Yeah.
Okay. Chad West?
Yeah.
Kenzie Salisbury?
Pass.
Kevin Sinkovich?
Pass.
And Chad McFarland?
He just left.
He just left. Okay.
He wished us all a good night.
Did he?
Yeah.
All right, so, they are supposed to provide us a finalized sheet at the end, like, on the, for Kaufman County, they, you know, they said, hey, you've got $300 left in escrow, because we only spent $200. So, we did get that back from them. I kinda had to remind them, like, hey, we need to know that. And so, they did send me a certified something saying, this is what you have left. So, but I think it's gonna be taking the secretary or myself to prod them to, hey, we need those figures, and so Shelley, appreciate your input. We do need that.
Okay, I second Simeon's motion.
Okay, so we have a, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four for the project sheet HO2 for county roads 2446, county road 2458, county road 2450, CR 2326, and county road 2434. And we have a second by Jaffe. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. All right, so, we look forward to seeing better roads. All right, H, under general public comments, they are limited to three minutes, and we've got Shelley Smith, she's gonna pass, Patrick Smith, Chad West, Kenzie Salisbury, Chad McFarland, I guess he left, and Kevin. Okay. Well, for a short meeting, the time is 7:32. We adjourned.